This time I'd call the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. This is the sixth day of December 2021, and at this time, I'd ask Commissioner Ronnie Reese, Vice Chairman, if he would to give us our invocation, followed by Commissioner Kit Harmon with a pledge of allegiance. If he would, please rise.
Father, we come to you today, and we would thank you for this Christmas season. It helps us to remember the true reason for the season, and that's the birth of Christ. We thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for the blessings on our county. Pray you'd be give us wisdom tonight as we meet that we'd make decisions that would move Alexander County forward. Pray for each person here. Give us a safe journey back to our homes at the end of the evening. We'll be thanking for our, all the ones that protect us each day, for our first responders, EMS, Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Highway Patrol, and Fire Department. Protect them as they go at all costs. Protect each of our county's citizens, our county employees, and we thank you for all the good things you do. Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, does any Commissioner have any reports they'd like to give at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give a report. I was able to attend United Realty, six in November. Commissioner Harmon attended that, another business opening in the county. And they refurnished an older house, so, you know, there's some things going on. Retail's coming in. And also, I'd like to recognize our Santa Cops have a presentation, some toys for them.
Very good. At this time, anyone here with the Sheriff's Department would like to come forward with us at this time as we recognize the Santa Cops? the job you do with Santa Cops is a very important part of our county. The things you do to support the children and to make someone's Christmas just a little brighter, a little happier, and to bring something to these folks on that day that Christ was born. So on behalf of that, I present this with to you, and I thank each of the other Commissioners. Have something for y'all, sir.
While they're doing that, I just want to say, first of all, thank you Commissioners, you know, remembering the Santa Cops. It's been a program that we've had from 2010 probably, and we've always had such a good response. And what I want to say is, and I'll let Phillip say a few words, is that we are always trying to make a difference in the children. You know, a lot of times, all they see us doing is putting handcuffs on their parents, and that's, you know, that turns these kids against authority. And this program here, I think, helps to turn that around, where just law enforcement is not all bad. So again, thank you Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, if it's okay, I just want to say, I mean, I appreciate what Sheriff's Department does. I really appreciate the school resource officers. My five-year-old, well, my kids are at Bethlehem Elementary, and Officer Rowe is the SRO at Bethlehem, and he's there on Wednesdays. And Wednesdays are the highlight of my five-year-old's week, because when I, you know, when we're going in drop off, he sees Officer Rowe's vehicle, and he sees Officer Rowe, and how he can, how they can know, how he can know all those kids' names. And, you know, I also drop off a child at West Alexander and, you know, see a deputy there every morning. I got to speak to him Saturday after the parade, just to say we appreciate it. But it is, in my opinion, very important to make sure our children know that the police aren't after us. The police are, the police are here to protect us and to keep us safe, and that's one thing we work real hard on at our house. So I think Santa Cops is a, you know, is a great program to try to show little people that guys with badges aren't bad.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Thank you all. Gentlemen, you have your agenda before you tonight. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Make a motion we approve the agenda as is.
Second. Motion's made, and second, any discussion. There being none, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And at this time, under public comment, I think we have one speaker. We have the Mayor of Taylorsville, Mr. George Holloman.
Yes, I appreciate your saying my name, so that everybody who doesn't know me. And Jack Sims came with me tonight. I want to shout out to Rick French and the county for producing a great parade on Saturday. He works hard, and I want to give him credit for another item that he cleaned up for the town on Hammer Road about, it's been over two years ago. And one phone call to Rick French, and the problem was fixed there. However, tonight, I'm here before you to say thank you for the park downtown in Taylorsville. What you have done is going to make a difference to people for years to come. That is a real mark in our community. What started out to be just a music bandstand by the Rotary Club, and we're thankful to the Rotary Club for what they started, but you all turned it into a park. And the drawings that I've seen are just beautiful. I did have one comment from a citizen that said, "Have you seen that ugly fence that's up there?" And I said, "Ma'am, that's just a construction fence, so don't worry about it."
Right.
I can't say enough how much this is going to mean to downtown Taylorsville, but I want to turn it over to Jack Sims. He may want to make a couple comments. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a council member, I want to thank the Commissioners and Mr. French as well. I thank you that you took the old trio and made it the service center, because it gave us a perfect backdrop to put the barn art projects on, so that when we have all the folks that come into Alexander County to go to the park, they'll see all that barn art that's on that wall. So I thank you for that, and thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number two on the agenda, election of Alexander County Board Chairman. At this time, I entertain motions for the chairman for next year, starting January the first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ronnie Reese.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Item number three on the agenda, election of Alexander County Board Vice Chairman. I entertain motions at this time.
Nominate Marty Panel for Vice Chairman.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number four, public hearing, rezoning case R-21-5 Cothran. At this time, I'll call on Scott Burrisson, the Community Regional Planner, who will be stepping in for Dustin Millsaps, who I understand is expecting a child.
Yeah, he was in the hospital this morning, and he'll be out for about a month taking care of his new, his new baby boy.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so he will, he'll be back in about mid-January, but I'll be, I'll be flitting around until then.
And if you'll excuse me for just one moment, as this is a public hearing, at this time, on this rezoning case, at this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the public hearing pertaining to rezoning case R-21-5 Cothran.
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Sir, you may now proceed.
Sure. So this, this business, this is a request to rezone property at 95 Sugar Valley Court, currently long-time commercial use for a pool company. From what I understand, having read the staff report, that staff and the planning board have recommended not to rezone this property. The idea was to rezone this to a highway commercial district, to bring this into conformity and to allow some new commercial uses. However, there's no highway commercial anywhere near this parcel, and it seems like this would be a pretty clear case of spot zoning, which generally means they're showing favoritism to one particular property owner, rather than following a larger countywide plan. So staff recommended against the rezoning in this case for that reason. But you are able to go forward with it if you decide that it is consistent with the plan.
Did you have any letters objecting to this?
I was not given any. I'm not aware of any.
And I was also reading here where they say it's a violation, and could you explain the violation?
A violation?
Of the zoning?
So as an RA, where it is right now, it has been a commercial use for a long time, so it's a non-conforming use in this RA, this residential district. That's fine, but it can't, the property can't be expanded in any way, or changed to a different kind of more intensive commercial use. So to do something, you would have to have it rezoned. And in this case, because there's no other, no other highway commercial anywhere around here, we would be saying that this would be a, a non-conform, a spot zoning case. Generally, if it's a non-conforming, it would have to either, if you wanted to expand it, you would have to move it somewhere else. Your goal is to eventually bring the lot into conformity with the rest of the zoning district, is to make it a residential area, essentially.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
So the rest of the land is owned by different people, correct?
As far as I'm aware, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, one question. You know, I mean, we've been part of plenty, plenty of rezoning cases in the past. And am I, I guess, am I correct in saying, I mean, spot zoning is, I don't want to just say not supposed to be allowed, but is there a, you know, are there stated regulations against spot zoning? You know, are there, I mean, I understand, you know, you said that it potentially shows favoritism.
Correct.
Which, like, I mean, which I get, but I'm just, is there a cut and dry, spot zoning is wrong?
So...
I mean, you know, and I don't know that there's a stat, you know, a statutory issue or statute or anything that pertains to it. I'm just wondering.
No, it's a good question. Spot zoning is not strictly illegal in North Carolina, but if you do it in order to avoid legal liability, to open yourself up to liability, you've got to have a pretty good reason, and you've got to have that in your consistency statement. So you're going to pass a consistency statement, and you'll have to have a reason in there that says, you know, this isn't, we're okay with this being spot zoning because it follows, you know, such and such comprehensive plan, or such and such vision for the county. That would be, that would be a reason, a defense for why it would be okay.
But if...
But it's not cut and dry illegal, no.
So if spot zoning were allowed, we very likely would have to allow it in the future as long as, you know, in a similar situation, because if we didn't, then from a legal perspective, we would be picking and choosing.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just, you know, this is, this is conversation, I mean, honestly.
Right. I think, in my opinion, I mean, the planning board did deny this, and because it didn't conform. And I think the thinking was that, you know, if you, if you do it here and something else comes up, you're going to have to change it there because you've already...
Set a precedent.
Set a precedent.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, I think the biggest thing is that, I think what, what they're looking for mostly is to be consistent with the properties around the area, to make sure that it remains the same, such as farmland and stuff like that out in the country, and residential sections. That's the way I understand it, based on what a little bit of...
Is the owner's...
Well, the owner's here.
I didn't think I saw anybody.
I didn't think I saw anybody.
Okay.
Yeah. So is there anybody that lives close to the property that would like to speak as this is a public hearing? Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions or concerns that need to be addressed?
I'm good.
All right. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to close public hearing for rezoning case R-21-5 for Cothran.
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we follow the guidance of the planning board and do not approve the rezoning case R-21-5 Cothran due to it not being consistent with the land use, land use plans. That's, you know, I'll say I could read this stuff off here, I guess, but that it's not consistent with land use plans or the other property around it.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number five, public hearing, public nuisance hearing, 465 Jimmy Duncan Lane. Mr. Bill Rogers, Chief Building Inspector, Cody Bauer, Code Enforcement Office. While they're coming forward, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion we open the public hearing on 465 Jimmy Duncan Lane.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. At this time, is there anyone here that's going to speak on behalf of this zoning case on 465 Jimmy Duncan Lane? Okay, if you don't mind, and you're going to speak, if you all don't mind, if you'll step forward up here for a moment, because what we have to do is we need to have you sworn in, and the gentleman be sworn in.
I'm just going to handle this, so I'm just going to...
You're just going to watch, observe, okay, all right. You're going to be, and then the board will need to be sworn in at this time. So if you would, gentlemen.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do. Thank you. All right. Jim, you can have a seat there in front, since you're going to be speaking. Mr. Bauer, if you would, please.
Okay. As stated, we got two nuisance cases, 465 Jimmy Duncan Lane and 260 Seventh Street Southwest. First, we'll be doing 465 Jimmy Duncan Lane. It was first brought to my attention in April of 2021. The county has no real clear definition of what a junked vehicle is, so through process of working through that, I end up closing the case out. However, in July, I had another complaint on the property and was allowed access to an adjacent property to get better, a better view of vehicles on the property. And if you see on the PowerPoint, the overhead and various other photos that were taken, it's pretty clear there's some abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles, stuff like that. In my pursuit to find a definition for a junk vehicle, like I said, the county don't have one, so I referred back to the North Carolina General Statute, GS 20-401, Section 33F, which is a motor vehicle which is incapable of operation or use upon a highway and has no resale value except as a source of parts or scrap, and is not titled or registered. Chapter seven, Chapter 50.07, Section J of our nuisance ordinance, is the abandonment of junked motor vehicles on public grounds and private property. So it's in the recommendation of the inspections Department to order abatement.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? And the vehicles are not operable?
They don't appear so. There's some back there that aren't tagged, which would mean they're inoperable on a highway, so. But as far as testing, I mean, I'm just, I'm limited to no trespassing signs and stuff like that, which are on the property, so.
How many cars, would you say?
It's, it's hard telling. There is, so the first instance was complaints about in the front yard and stuff like that. Those vehicles appeared to be tagged, and every time I've been down there, there's been a pretty good rotation moving the vehicle out. Our zoning definition of a junkyard is any vehicle that's inoperable for 90 days. The ones in the front yard are obviously in and out of there quicker than 90 days. The vehicles in question are the ones in the backyard. And there's quite a few. I think the video or the photo of the overhead view is probably the best shot. There's not really a good angle.
Looks like there's, there's wooded area on two sides or one side?
Yeah, there's, there's sparse woods on the, I guess it'd be the left-hand side of the property, and a little bit thicker woods on the right.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Did the complaints come from neighbors?
Uh, yes, sir.
Is there any one on Jimmy Duncan Lane that would like to speak?
Yeah.
If you would, please state your name.
My name is Danny Ray Stillwell, Senior. Yes, sir, I've lived there for 20 years, or 21 years, and it's been a nice, peaceful, quiet neighborhood. There's been no trouble, had no trouble with any of my neighbors, even with the man that used to live there that passed away. Fine Christian man. I enjoyed his company a lot. I talked to him a lot and enjoyed his company. And since he passed away and his son has moved in there, he's brought nothing but ugliness into our neighborhood. And I like to hear, I was pleased to hear you guys talking about how much you enjoyed fueling fire in our community, our town, making it presentable and look, look pretty, you know, for people to come and enjoy in our town, but also an outline in areas, you know, we need to have that as well. And I'm glad you guys realize, because I don't think you'd want a junkyard in your front, front yard. Now, the neighbor there has parked cars in and out. Traffic has been in and out constantly. You know, there's junk sitting everywhere back in the back, and I know the man's a mechanic, and he works on cars, but our community, I mean, our neighborhood zone, commercial, residential, I mean, agricultural residential, and there's no place for all this junk car sitting around right in our front door. They're right in our front door. The cars are just one of the issues. There's, there's other things that, you know, this man has done to aggravate my wife and I, and the other neighbor as well, Ms. Taylor. He filed a complaint against her about her vehicle, one she had, and she moved hers very quickly away. So if the laws are set for one, they should be set for all of us. We all should have to follow them. And I'd hope that the Commission would see that it's just a nuisance, and I don't think any of you would enjoy having something like that in your front yard. I don't think so, anyway, because all of you seem like highly respectable men and like to take care of your homes and all. I want them to look nice. You don't want nothing like that in your neighborhood. So I hope you would look at that and see the problem and maybe do whatever you can to rectify it. Thank you.
Any questions, Jim?
Your lands of Jacob, of this property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So your, your house is, just picturing, this is your place, the one on the left or the one in the back?
Yeah, approach you.
You may.
He's in 458.
458.
He's this one right here. He's, it don't even show. It's right here.
Oh, okay, all right. You're up in the front where it doesn't show it. Up here.
Across the street.
Across the street, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
I'm kind of familiar. Where is the actual Jimmy Duncan Lane? Is that off of Taylorsville manufacturing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
My name's David Elder.
Yes, state your name, please.
David Elder. All the vehicles on that property are tagged and titled to me, registered me. Some of them have been tagged before, and I took off the road. I repair them and fix them and resell them, what I do. There's three vehicles on that property that will not run, but every one of them will run, drive. I keep them moved around the mow around and stuff. They're very well up kept. And the junk, one, three in the back are very back off the back of the road, not to be seen. And the ones in the front yard are, some of them, three or four of them are customers' vehicles I take home. They owe me money. I bring them home to, just to hold them. They owe me money, I bring them home to, just to hold on to them there.
So you have a shop at another location?
Yes, I have a shop.
Is the shop here or is it another location?
It's in another location.
Mr. Chairman, this is a question for whomever, I mean, you know, it's not this, what, what does, I know, or excuse me, I don't know. I think residential zoning does, I mean, does it allow, you know, like a automotive repair shop at a, you know, at a residence? That's just, I mean, I'm asking because I don't know. And I don't know if anybody, you know, if any zoning folks know the answer to that or not, I'm, um, because I've actually wondered that before, not just about, you know, not just pertaining to.
I can't quote it, but I'd be of the opinion that if it's zone residential, you wouldn't be able to operate a commercial business out of it. I'm not sure, but that's one of my opinions. Mr. Bowers? Yes, sir, you may, but you'd have to be sworn in to ask you that question, okay? You'd come forward, we'll swear you in, please.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth to the best of your knowledge?
I do. So unfortunately, I wasn't even sure I was gonna be here until Sunday night, so I haven't thoroughly reviewed the zoning ordinance. It's possible, if you want, I can check real quick, but I'm not sure if that's quite expedient right now. It's very possible, as far as customary home occupations in different lots, sometimes that is allowed in residential districts. I just haven't had a chance to look through it yet, I know that's not super satisfying, but.
Right, interesting, no problem.
I mean, yeah, I have the entire, I mean, I have the entire zoning, you know, thing printed out in my office and know exactly where it is, because, you know, I mean, I work in real estate and construction and I have to, I have to look at it on occasion, but I've never, like I say, I don't, I don't know the answer.
Do you mind to take back up to the microphone, please? Do you operate a business out of where you live?
Not where I live, I ain't running a business, sir, I just keep my cars, my personal ones there at my home.
And you said a moment ago that three of those cars were folks' cars that you've done work for, that you've brought there because they owe you money?
Yes, sir.
And those are the ones tucked away at the back?
No, they're in my front yard.
Front yard?
Yeah.
And how do you get those cars there, do you drive them there?
I drive them there, when they're fixed, I bring them home, park them there till they pay their bill.
But you do have three cars or so?
I got three classic cars in the back, you know, old Mustangs back there in the back hid away.
But you don't have, like, clients coming in and out?
Don't have the clients for that, they're coming out on Rocky Springs Road.
Alright, thanks.
Sir, while you're up, how much total property do you have at that location?
Two acres.
Two acres, okay, so yours is the two tracks that's in the?
Yeah, the one acre tracks.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Automobile repair.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know we're still in our public meeting, but I would make a motion that we table till we get our, all of our information and then come back to this for a ruling. We're gonna close the public meeting first.
No, I think we can continue it.
Okay, yeah, I make a motion, we continue the public nuisance on 465 Jimmy Duncan Lane.
Continue it to January meeting?
Thirty, yeah, thirty day.
Motion's been made to continue till we can get answers that need to be answered before a decision is made. So at this time, that motion has been made, I entertain a second.
Second.
Motion is made, so is there any discussion? There being none, with the motion being made while the public hearing is open, I entertain the vote, all those in favor, indicate raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion case. Gentlemen, we'll table this case until January meeting, and that way we will have the information that we need in order to proceed at that time. Okay, alright. Yeah, and then, so therefore we'll move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, public nuisance hearing, 267th Street Southwest. Mr. Bill Rogers, Kade Building Inspector, and Mr. Cady Bowers, Kade Enforcement Officers, gentlemen, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open public hearing on, public nuisance hearing on 267th Street Southwest.
Motion's made, I entertain a second.
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate raising your hand, motion case. Is there anyone here that's going to speak for the hearing on 267th Street Southwest? At this time, those folks that will be involved, if you would, if you'd be sworn in at this time.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
267th Street Southwest is another property that was opened up later this year for abandoned appliances on the property. They cleaned that up after the first letter, so I didn't have to pursue further. Unfortunately, another complaint was made in August about a abandoned and junk vehicle in the rear of the property and trash and junk around the property as well. As far as I, as far as I know and can tell, I drive by there pretty regularly, it looks like the vehicle has gotten moved, and it's kind of like a moving around of junk. It's like junk will be in the front yard one day and then it might be in the backyard the next, so a general cleanup would be helpful. It's in the inspections Department opinion to order abatement.
Gentlemen, any questions? Unless that just looks like junk, I mean, things that just really need to be cleaned up?
Yeah, yeah, it's a little better than previous properties we brought forward, but, yeah, there's been a habit of putting the trash along the fence and stuff like that as well, so.
I take it, this is in the city limits, correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
A lot of houses close.
Yes, sir, it's right, it's right there on the corner of Blanch-Gualtney, right by Taylorsville Elementary and all that.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion, we close public hearing on 267th Street Southwest.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, I entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we proceed with the abatement and any required cleanup at the property located at, sorry, I have too many papers. 267th Street Southwest, Taylorsville.
As far as the timeline, like you said, it's just kind of general junk, three to four weeks probably be plenty enough time to get it cleaned up.
And I was gonna say, with adding to my motion, with whatever is reasonable and customary pertaining to the timeframe based on?
I think the ordinance says 20 days unless it's like in extenuating circumstances, so 20 days, in my opinion, would be plenty for them to clean up.
So 20, with a 20-day timeframe to allow for a cleanup?
Very good.
Did I ramble enough?
No, you're fine.
Okay, sorry.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion case, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven tonight is the audit report for fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. Claire Chase, Martin Starnes Associates CPAs.
Are you all ready?
Yes.
I'm Claire Chase with Martin Starnes, and I'm here to present the audit to you. So this information is as of 6:30 2021. Just wanted to thank you for having us as your auditors for another year, and also thank you to Jennifer and all of her staff for their hard work, they work really hard every year and we really appreciate that. So for your results, we issued an unmodified opinion, and so that means that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe the financial statements would be misleading to the reader, and that's the best opinion we can give. For your general fund revenues, out of the total amount, 49% was made up of your property taxes, 27% was local option sales taxes, 12% was restricted intergovernmental, so that's federal and state grants. And then sales and services and permits and fees trail behind the top three at 8% and 3% respectively. And then there's a small 1% of other revenues, like other taxes and licenses and just miscellaneous revenues. For your ad valorem taxes, these increased from 20.9 million in 2020 to about 21.8 million in 2021. So this was about a 907,000 or 4% increase, so we would consider that comparable to prior year. We noted no tax rate change, but there was an increase in your collection percentage. This increased from 97.17% to 97.82% in 2021. For your local option sales tax, this increased as well from about 10.4 million in 2020 to about 12.1 million in 2021. This was approximately a 1.7 million or 16% increase, and this was mainly due to increases in your Articles 39, 40, 42, and your Medicaid Hold Harmless. For your restricted intergovernmental revenues, these increased as well from about 4.5 million in 2020 to about 5.4 million in 2021. This was about 864,000 or a 19% increase, and this was due to an increase in your federal and state grants. And this also includes your representative payee fund starting this year in 2021. This was new due to Gatsby Statement 84 fiduciary funds, so that was also part of the increase, so it's new going into this this year. For your general fund expenditures, for your four largest, public safety makes up 27%, human services is about 24%, education is 17%, and then general government is about 16%. So for your public safety expenditures, these increased from about 10.6 million in 2020 to about 11.3 million in 2021. Public safety is made up of your sheriff's office, detention center, fire protection, emergency communications and inspections. This increase of about 715,000 or 6.7% increase is mainly due to increases in your sheriff's office, emergency medical services, and your fire and emergency services. Your human services expenditures increased slightly from about 9.5 million in 2020 to about 9.8 million in 2021. Your human services includes health department, DSS, and senior center. This was approximately 346,000 or 3.6% increase, and this increase was primarily in the social services department. And also note that these figures include the representative payee this year due to the Gatsby Statement 84. Education expenditures also increased slightly from about 6.9 million in 2020 to about 7.2 million in 2021. These expenditures include expenses for County Board of Education and CVCC expenses. This 343,000 or 5% increase was mainly due to increase in your current expenses for Alexander County Board of Education. General government expenditures increased slightly from about 6.3 million in 2020 to about 6.6 million in 2021. General government includes things like governing body, administration, planning, finance, IT, et cetera. This increase of about 252,000 or 4% is mainly due to an increase in expenditures for public buildings. So for your general fund debt, there's about 4.5 million in current year debt service expenses, which was made up of about 4.4 million of principal and about 139,000 of interest. Also want to note that debt was refinanced in 2021 for the construction of the county's law enforcement and detention center. So the outstanding balance for notes payable at 263021 was about 3.39 million. So for your fund balance, this serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available and is calculated as your assets plus your deferred outflows, less your liabilities and deferred inflows, and that's what gives you the fund balance or net position. And as you know, there's five classifications, I'm not really gonna go into those, but if you have any questions, you can let me know. So for your available fund balance, as defined by the LGC, is calculated below. That's your total fund balance, less your non-spendable, which are things like pre-pays and inventories, which is not in cash form, less your stabilization by state statute gives you your available fund balance. And so this is really the calculation that is utilized as a basis for comparing you to other units and calculating your fund balance percentages. There is an increase in general fund available fund balance of about 6 million, and your available fund balance percentage is 46% of your total general fund expenditures and transfers out. So that 46% is approximately five to six months worth of expenditures. So for your general fund, this was calculated as your total fund balance of about 23.4 million, less your non-spendable 20,000, less your stabilization by state statute of 4.2 million, and that gives you the available fund balance of 19.1 million, as compared to prior year of 13.1 million or the increase of $6 million. This is about a 45% increase, and it was mainly due to an overall increase in fund balance and also a decrease in your stabilization by state statute. So here's the comparison, a three-year comparison for the general fund. So your percentage available fund balance divided by total expenditures and transfers out shows how much fund balance is available to cover your expenditures and transfers out. And so you can see that your available fund balance of 19.1 million And so you can see that your available fund balance of nineteen point one million divided by your total expenditures and transfers out, a forty-one million is how we calculate that forty-six percent. So that means that available fund balance can cover expenditures about point four times, and this is an increase from prior year. So you can see it's been steadily increasing from about thirty-one percent in twenty nineteen to thirty-three percent in twenty twenty, and then the forty-six percent in twenty twenty-one. So the LGC prefers you to maintain a fund balance near the average of your local government population group. And for Alexander County, the population group average at twenty twenty, the twenty twenty-one data is not available yet, was about thirty-five percent. Here's your solid waste fund overview. So you can see your cash from operations was about a hundred and twenty thousand, and your budgetary net income was a hundred and twenty thousand. I do wanna note that your budgetary net income does not include depreciation expense. It only includes cash items. And then your increase in cash from operations from the prior year was about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And then you had an increase in budgetary net income of about fifty-five thousand. For your solid waste fund net position, your total net position was about seventy-one thousand, less your net investment in capital assets of about five hundred and sixty-two thousand gives you the unrestricted net position of a negative four hundred and ninety thousand. And this is an increase in your total net position of fifty-four thousand. So in prior year, there was a net position of sixteen thousand, and then in twenty twenty-one, it was seventy-one thousand. For your water funds overview, for Bethlehem Water, your cash from operations was about six hundred and twenty-one thousand, and your budgetary net income was four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. For the County Water and Sewer Fund, the cash from operations was about nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, and there was a budgetary net loss of about seventy-three hundred. For Bethlehem Water, there was a decrease in cash from operations from the prior year of about seventy-nine thousand, and the County Water and Sewer had an increase in cash from operations of about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. For your Bethlehem Water, there was an increase in budgetary net income of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, and the County Water and Sewer also had an increase in net income of about a hundred and thirty-two dollars. For your water funds net position, Bethlehem Water had a total net position of six point eight million, less your net investment in capital assets of three point two million gives the unrestricted net position of three point five million. And then for the County Water and Sewer Fund, total net position was about ten million, less net investment in capital assets of seven point five million gives the unrestricted net position of two point four million. So Bethlehem Water saw an increase in total net position of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, and the County Water and Sewer saw an increase in total net position of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand. For your water funds debt, the outstanding debt at six thirty was eleven point five million. Principal paid was six hundred and thirty-six thousand, and interest paid was about seventy thousand. This debt will be paid off in twenty thirty-five. Here's a three-year comparison for your waters and sewer funds. And so the top part is calculating your quick ratio, which the quick ratio just measures how many times current assets can cover your current liabilities, or it's the ability to meet those short-term liabilities. So the county can cover its current liabilities with current assets about three point one six times, which you can see that's calculated as the seven point five million of current assets divided by the two point three million of current liabilities. We also have your operating net income excluding depreciation debt principal. So a negative operating net income excluding depreciation and debt service would indicate that your rates are not covering operating expenditures, but the county has a positive balance of seven hundred and forty-four thousand. The unrestricted cash divided by expenses less depreciation and debt service calculates how many months' worth of expenditures a unit can pay based on that unrestricted cash at year end. So the typical billing cycle is one month, and that's about eight point three percent. And when you normally say one month extra usually gives a local government enough cash to handle usual monthly expenditure, so that's about sixteen point six percent. But that would be the bare minimum to keep the fund from experiencing cash flow issues. But the county has a percent of two hundred and fifty-five percent, and that's about average for the past three years. Something new that we're required to discuss this year is called something called performance indicators. And that comes from a template that we submit to the LGC called a data input sheet. And so basically, that takes all the financial statement information. We input it into a template, and Jennifer, she reviews this, she certifies it, we submit it with the audit, and it analyzes the data and shoots out results called performance indicators. This could range from deficit fund balance, statutory violations, or any significant findings. I'm pleased to report that the county had no general performance indicators, but I am required to discuss any audit findings. And there were no financial reporting findings, but there were two compliance findings for the Medicaid program. Those were considered to be material weaknesses. And you can see the compliance package in your audit report for more information, or you can email me if you have any questions on those as well. That's it for my presentation. Are there any questions?
Very good. Very good. I mean, each year it's gone up since two thousand and nineteen and all the way down here to two thousand and twenty-one. And I'm sure Jennifer can remember back about twelve, thirteen years ago when we were getting those letters from the LGC telling us we need to get our fund balance up. And I'm telling you, I think I was the one that got that letter that year, because I was chairman, if I'm not mistaken. And so I'm extremely pleased with the audit and really pleased with our staff, county commissioners, that have exercised extreme caution and conservatism to make sure that we keep the budget where it needs to be. And our finance department is to be commended on making sure that we stay in compliance and do the things that need to be done to make our county in good, sound financial shape. And these commissioners and the staff, Mr. French, great job.
I just wanted to speak up and say, I'm Jennifer Herman. I'm the finance director. I really appreciate Claire and her staff and Martin Starrns and Associates. And if there were any other questions that you had either now or if you think of some later, you can let me know if it's something that needs to be answered by the auditors or by my office. Either one, I'll be happy to take any of those questions and get back to you or answer them tonight if you have them.
Just Mr. Yoder stated, good report. Thank you for heading in the right way. And I appreciate everything that finance, all our employees are doing to help us too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something?
Oh, absolutely.
One thing I'd like to add is, you know, this is, there's a lot of departments in the county, and everybody works, we always don't get along, but we, like a family, we get, you know, get the job done. But I'd like to thank a lot of the departments for working with the budget. The finance department, they're not a large department, so a lot of times on weekends, you'll see their vehicles here working. And they work very hard at trying to handle the accounting and everything that we have to review. So I just hats off to everybody involved in the process.
It takes all of us, it takes a group, it takes a family to make sure that we stay financially sound in Alexander County. And I think that this entire county employees, county departments, county heads, commissioners, Mr. French and the staff have all done an outstanding job, and you're all to be commended. And thank you all for the hard work and dedication you put into being part of Alexander County and making it better each day.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also thank our entire village or community. Folks in our community, they want things to be offered to them. And it's, this board has been, in my opinion, very conservative since twenty eighteen. They've, I believe that we've been able to do quite a bit in putting in long-term facilities for our citizens to enjoy with their families for years to come. A lot of that through grants and matching and this and that. But I just wanna thank the current board and county manager and Jamie and actually all the departments, because everybody's watching their budget and trying to conserve as much as we can in each department and here and there, but still provide the services that the county demands. And we've been able to steadily increase a fund balance while doing so. So congratulations to the county, I guess.
That's right. I'd just like to add, too, you know, everybody's done a good job. Appreciate what's going on. And, you know, there's a lot of projects that we have completed, a lot of projects are still going on. And, you know, with our debt, you know, we're sitting in good shape where we can hopefully add some more infrastructure, some water and some other things, too. So we're constantly looking at what can be done within the realm of what we have. And I'm a firm believer, you know, all the monies that come in, once it's there, that's when I say, yeah, you know, we'll spend it. But, you know, you gotta manage it just like a budget at home. And the LGC gives us the opportunity to get grants and fund things. I know, I think when I came on about seven years ago, I think our fund balance was around maybe twelve, thirteen percent. So, you know, we've tried to, you know, do things and stay within budget, and I appreciate everything that county manager, our clerk, and all the employees in every department has worked and helped to arrive at this. So thanks again.
Jim, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one budget audit.
Make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty-one audit.
Second.
Motion is made second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight on the agenda, proclamation declaring December the first to December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-one as Christmas in Bethlehem. Commissioner Leo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I will read proclamation as it states. Proclamation declaring December first through thirty-first, twenty twenty-one as Christmas in Bethlehem. Whereas the Bethlehem Community Development Association has been a longtime supporter of improvements and quality of life issues in the Bethlehem area. And whereas Mount Pisgah Lutheran Church has assumed the duties of organizing the annual Christmas in Bethlehem events formerly handled by the Bethlehem Community Development Association. And whereas Alexander County wishes to promote events that increase community spirit and offer opportunities for fellowship during the Christmas season. And whereas the annual Bethlehem Starlighting has been a fixture of the Christmas season for more than forty years, annually drawing thousands of citizens to the Bethlehem area. And whereas the Bethlehem Starlighting was held on December fourth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas these Christmas events promote values and morals, which are the binding fiber of the community and are strongly supported by Alexander County, area churches, businesses, and citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare December first through thirty-first, twenty twenty-one as Christmas in Bethlehem, adopted this sixth day of December, twenty twenty-one, to be signed by Larry G. Yoder, chairman, and attested by Jamie M. Starrns, clerk to the board.
Thank you very much, sir. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Item number nine, approval of the twenty twenty-two Alexander County Commissioners Meeting Schedule. Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your pocket is the twenty twenty-two meeting schedule. One of the things we've changed this year is we've moved the consolidated Human Services Board meetings instead of every other month to once a quarter. If we need to meet sooner than that, we always can. But we follow the pretty much the same schedule. We started having two meetings in April because of budget. And be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, for the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two.
You've heard the presentation, gentlemen. We have a motion to approve the Commissioners Meeting Schedule for twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion is made second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Approval of the twenty twenty-two Alexander County Holiday Schedule. Mr. French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the holiday schedule following the same holidays of state takes. And for twenty twenty-two, be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Looks like a standard.
Yep.
Entertaining motion to approve, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we approve the holiday schedule.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Item number eleven, board appointments and reappointments. Mr. Marie French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Library Board of Trustees appoint Leanne Ferguson, Colleen Williams, Commissioner Larry Yoder for three years. Local Emergency Planning Committee appoint Jerry Epling, Matt Jordan, Commissioner Marty Pennell for three years. Reappoint Steve Eisenhower and Micah Henry for three years. And appoint Pamela Bowman to replace Seth Harris, whose term expires in twenty twenty-three. New this year, coming year, is a courthouse committee, which is first step for a new courthouse. Recommendation is to appoint Judge Crosswhite, the senior resident Superior Court Judge, Judge Graham, the chief district court judge, Danny Dodson, clerk of court, Kim Taylor, attorney, the sheriff, Chris Bowman, myself, the county manager, Patrick White, elections director, Commissioner Larry Yoder, and Commissioner Marty Pennell. And I also would like to add the IT director, Greg Kronk. Again, this is just forming a courthouse committee. The commissioners will, one of the things we're gonna ask you to do tonight is to advertise for an architect so that we can, the commissioners will interview the architects and select one. And that architect, architectural firm will work with the courthouse committee, and that will take some time, gentlemen. And also, we have the Farmland Preservation Board and appointing Commissioner Kent Herman. We also have the Alexander County Fire Commission appoint Ashley Starrns, Matt Jordan, Scott Abernathy, Gary Herman, and Commissioner Ronnie Reese. The CBCC Alexander Center Advisory Board appoint Commissioner Larry Yoder. And the Recreation Advisory Board Advisory Committee appoint Commissioner Larry Yoder. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. French, on the courthouse committee now, if there's any change in any elected official, of course, those would be changed to that elected official.
It's really by position.
Right, by position, yes. Just wanna make that clear.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the board appointments and reappointments with the addition of Greg Kronk, IT director, to the courthouse committee.
Motion's made.
Other than as stated.
Oh, excuse me. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number twelve, Mr. Rick French, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number thirty-four through forty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment thirty-four is to create a separate departmental budget for the in-house county attorney. And that's a process that we're getting ready to start. Budget Amendment thirty-five is to increase the public buildings maintenance budget for an additional full-time groundskeeper position. And I will remind you that the state has taken away all of our inmates that were helping us. So we certainly, that's a position that we really need. Budget Amendment number thirty-six is to increase the fire emergency services budget for FEMA, public assistant grant funds to reimburse the town of Taylorsville for debris removal and damage to roads, bridges, and pump stations from tropical storm.
and damage to roads, bridges, and pump stations from tropical storm eddah. The grant funds are passed through the county from FEMA due to the county being the local emergency management agency. Number 37 is to increase the fire emergency services budget by Sugarloaf Fire Department and Vashti Fire Department, $2,500 per month, starting in January through June 2022, to enable these two fire departments to hire an onsite staff person. Budget Amendment number 38 is to increase the Health Department COVID-19 budget for revised funding allocations from state for fiscal year 2022. Budget Amendment number 39 is to increase the Health Department budget for prior year Medicaid funds required to be carried forward to fiscal year 2022 for the care management of high-risk pregnancy program. Budget Amendment 40 is to adjust the Health Department Behavioral Health Budget for Duke Endowment private grant funds of $15,062 carried forward from prior year. Second, donations of $45,74 carried forward from prior year. Number three, local revenues of $96,05 carried forward from prior year. Reduction, number four, reduction in grant funding budgeted for fiscal year 2022 due to lower amount allocated from the Rural Health Grant Program. And to adjust other Health Department program budgets for $119,865. And $23,659 to carry forward funds from the general Medicaid cost settlement. And to decrease primary care and dental health budgeted revenues for fiscal year 2022 due to lower amount allocated from the Rural Health Grant Program. Number, Budget Amendment number 41 is to increase the DSS budget for funds received by Adult Protective Services for participating in a study directed towards donations for adult services. Budget Amendment 42 is long, is to adjust the budget for 2.5 cost of living adjustment effective on the January 14th, 2022 pay date. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about the budget amendment. I'm sorry, and 43 is to adjust the budget for 2.5% cost of living adjustment effective for the same pay date. That's for solid waste.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions? At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the Budget Amendments 34 through 43.
Make a motion to approve Budget Amendments 34 through 43 as stated.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Other business, county managers report. Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items mentioned tonight. One is that we have a copy of a letter from, copy of a letter from Senator Proctor announcing the state-funded projects for Alexander County. And there's water and sewer projects and project for the schools and some other projects that are listed. Advertising, as I think I've mentioned to you gentlemen, for the DSS director and county attorney has closed out. We're in the process of setting up interviews, and that'll take place very soon. We are all aware Whittenburg Access will be temporarily closed beginning November 29th to allow for site improvements. Closure of the boat ramp is expected to last through February of 2022. Also, we've learned that new state law will go into effect January 1st, which will require psychological evaluations by a licensed psychiatrist prior to hiring law enforcement officers for county, cities, and towns, and it's at our expense. So that process will slow down some. So I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. French, how many applied for the director DSS? Do you have any idea? Or have you?
Yes, sir. I do not. We're, right now, we're working on calling in four of the applicants.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Same question with county attorney.
We had six attorneys apply, and we'll probably interview three or four of those for starters.
Mr. Chairman, would it be prudent to, you know, we have, I mean, we've all seen this, but the letter from Senator Dean Proctor with what he was able to get put in the state budget for Alexander County's benefit, would it be, would it be proper to share that information? I mean, it's public information.
Yes, sir.
Public information, you come to share.
Could I do that?
Yes, sir.
For those of you that don't, you know, that don't know, our 42nd District North Carolina Senator is Dean Proctor. And I want, I want personally, and I know the rest of the board agrees, he has taken true interest in Alexander County, which a lot of times, which on some occasions in the past has not been the case. Because typically, in the district that we're in, we're not necessarily the biggest county, we're not necessarily the biggest population, and a lot of times, Alexander County gets overlooked in Raleigh. But Senator Proctor was able to get quite a few things put into the state budget for us, for Alexander County's benefit. And if you'll appease me, I'll run through them right quick. You know, and all of these things will essentially not cost Alexander County citizens any money. 2.2 million, $65,000 for a water tank in the Bethlehem Water System. 1.5 plus million dollars for sewer expansion. $202,000 for an additional sewer extension. $422,000 for an additional sewer extension. $540,000 plus dollars for water and sewer extensions to the site that we are looking at potentially for a new courthouse. $122,500 plus for local Health Department grant. And $630,000 for repairs and renovations to the Alexander Central High School tennis courts and track, which, when you add those up, I mean, I didn't officially add them up, but it's almost $6 million. And basically, Senator Proctor contacted Mr. French and said, hey, what could you guys use money for? And that's never been the case before, that I'm aware of. And he was able to get, you know, little old Alexander County, he was able to get us about $6 million from the state that we would not be getting if he had not asked and worked to get that put into the state budget. And I know the entire board is very appreciative of what he's been able to do and how it'll benefit, you know, benefit our county.
That's great. I agree. And also, it's something that we really haven't thought much about, probably people driving over that bridge has. I'm thinking that the Cheatham Ford Bridge is back replaced, is that correct? And Senator Proctor was a big player, and, you know, it seems like things move real slow, but he was actually able to get things moving faster for us on bridge replacements, getting roads back open. He actually came into the county along with, I think Representative Elmore came in too looking. So, you know, it's good to have a listening ear in Raleigh, so we can be thankful for them.
And when you're talking about the repairs and everything that's made in the county, I think it's very important also to speak about our district engineer. They worked real close together and DOT along with them and trying to push through, and they did an outstanding job of getting all that done. And I spoke with Senator Proctor several times in the last couple of months prior to all this being passed, and he felt real good about it, and then he kept saying it was going to happen, and it did. And I expressed our appreciation, our thanks to him, and let him know how much we appreciated what he did for Alexander County. Because that was a big step for us, and that's money that's been appropriated to us by the state, and it will help us fulfill some obligations that we have to continue to improve Alexander County. And hopefully, it will make it a much better community and people have more access to our infrastructure, and it'll be well done. And he did a really great job for us, and it's tremendous appreciation to him for stepping up to the plate. Good job.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And I appreciate all the comments, and I sure appreciate, I've talked with Senator Proctor several times about other items too, but just want the public to know that as wonderful as this is for the county, it moves slowly. And this is, this is American, this is rescue money that's passed through the state to us, so we still have to go through the same processes. So it's going to take some time, but it's wonderful that we aren't having to pay, so...
Exactly right.
But hats off to him too. Appreciate his hard work. But we do have to go through the processes to make this happen, so it'll take some time.
Absolutely. Nothing in government is fast.
That's true.
Everything in government is a turtle.
Moves slow.
Moves very slow.
Except the police cars.
That's exactly right.
Police cars.
Under the consent agenda, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as stated in our packet.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion is made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And at this time, under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A, 3, 4, 5, and 6, attorney-client privilege economic development contractual personnel, contractual and personnel, upon adjournment, we will go into closed session and we will re-adjourn for... Yeah, we will, we will reconvene to take action on an item. Make that in form of a motion, gentlemen.
Second.
Motion is made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much.